We're good. Calling to order our Select Ward Workshop tonight to talk about goals update. So, Happy New Year to everybody and may you all be healthier than I. But I'm not gonna make anybody sick, so that's all good. I think we will probably plan the ticket from the top. And Kate, we're really we don't, I, things that have been deferred to 2024 will probably skip by. I'm hoping that if somebody is watching, they should go and pull a copy of this Select Ward Goals document, which does have updates on it, so that'll be it sort of all along. So, 1-1 is the Ridge Hill Nike Assessment Phase 2 for Long-Term Plan that we are deferring to 2024. FY 2024, just so we can be clear. Work with the Planning Board on the next steps related to the MBTA Community Housing Guidelines. Katie, do you want to just
Sure.
everybody with where we are?
And so our next step is an action plan to DHCD by the end of this month. You'll have the draft in your inboxes first thing tomorrow morning. It's ready to go, so we're just asking if you have any comments or questions, concerns, let me know. We will be sharing it with the planning board as well. It's pretty straightforward, it's just steps from now to May Town Meeting, May 24.
Do you mind, can you just talk about sort of how long the process is going to take?
It's not long. So, it basically starts this month with the Planning Board taking recommendations that are in the housing plan, because they made recommendations specific to this zoning. So, they'll start reviewing that. We've built in three community workshops slash public meetings along the way with in-between staff or consultants doing updates to kind of what the financial implications would be, what the school student enrollment implications might be, depending on how you change things. And there's a compliance model that DHCD created, so we'll have to run each iteration through that. So, it's pretty technically intensive. And what was the other piece I wanted to mention?
What is the compliance model checking for?
That the zoning actually does comply with the regulations. So, it'll do a model basically of if this zoning were to pass, does it meet all the requirements around minimum unit capacity, the acreage, the, like, all the technical components. DHCD says that they will take 90 days to review proposed zoning. So, what we've built into the timeline is that we would get them zoning language September or October of 23. 90 days means ideally we would get it back from DHCD by the end of the calendar year. The Planning Board would then have to notice hearings on the zoning for town meetings starting in January, February. So, the goal is that we would know for sure from DHCD that what is going through the town meeting article process has gotten sign-off from the state. Because once the zoning article is advertised, the scope of the zoning can only be lessened, it can't be expanded.
Okay, so if we have to have that language in the fall to get to DHCD, we need to have language that we think is achievable for us. Is there any sense from the Planning Board, or will the Planning Board be thinking about how to preview that language? And, I mean, it's almost like they need hearings before the hearings or some
Yeah, so we, we, in the timeline, I'm, whoa, sorry that you don't have it in front of you, but there's three community workshops basically between this spring and fall to get us to that draft zoning language to send to DHCD. And then we have the town meeting process kind of after that, where the Planning Board has to actually have the formal hearings that are required by 4DA. So, it is, it's long, but the goal is to get it to May 24. Actual compliance needs to be done by the end of calendar year 24, so if so there's a little bit of a cushion there.
Marcus and Heidi, I don't know if you want to weigh in with anything else. I guess I'm also sort of carrying in my head, is there any sense that if we have some agreed to, that's by acre, you know, whatever it might be that's conforming with that that might become sort of a guideline for us going forward? Because I feel like we argue each project, so if there's a way to signal that, it would be helpful.
Well, I would say that was the objective of the housing plan. That work very close to certainly to make sure that we were able to comply with DHCD guidelines, but also to bring a sort of more regularized approach to our zoning and planning in general, so that we could look at the whole town comprehensively and then the type of development that we were looking for. In fact, the housing plan includes all of the, well, a proposed set of zoning changes that would comply, but also goes a little bit further and talks about other sort of most of the changes are along the spine in town, but there are outerlying areas that were kind of nonsensical in some fashion. It didn't work politically with kind of the way the rest of the town works. And so, we did make some suggested changes that may be separate from DHCD, just to keep things sort of more simple for that, but it doesn't do that.
Is there a 25% requirement on affordability today? Is there a number on that, or is that up to?
No, the mass affordability was moved to, gosh, 10%, 20%.
20%.
It was originally, you couldn't have more than 10, then you moved it to 24, whatever you have already throughout town.
So, the state does not put any requirements, they actually put a ceiling on what you could do.
Yeah.
But that's kind of a separate, but related conversation.
Yeah, okay.
But the zoning subgroup did pretty great work trying to put together all of the various rules and compliance requirements and have done a very comprehensive job. So, I think actually that most of that is in here. Assuming that, you know, public way in and all that. Evaluate the RTS service delivery model to guide future adjustments. It will be operational efficiencies. I'm sorry, can I just?
Yeah.
Go back to them.
Yeah.
Question here. Katie, I just wanted to check in on the updated demographic, because when last I wasn't updated about the school master plan? The demographics that the schools seem to have been using didn't include information on the new, at that time, MBTA guidelines. And so, I'm just wondering, is that going to be taken into kind of account as far as the school's population that goes? There was some
Yeah, we were in touch, schools had reached out to ask what the rules were, but I can check in with them to see. I don't know the last
Yeah.
what update you had looked at, but we are in communication.
Yeah, I mean, I think I asked the question of actually during one of his presentations, but it was a while ago, so at that point, they hadn't had that sort of on their radar.
Yeah.
Wasn't really a published thing yet, so I just wanted to make sure that.
I don't know if they would factor it in this early. You're on the future school needs area, and what, did they talk about the DHCD guidelines?
Future school needs didn't talk about it, but there wasn't any recommendations at the time that future school needs met. So Well, so they definitely know that the zoning is going to change, and so that they're aware of. I think, I think what nobody really is clear on, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we're not clear on is if there's some factors that helped us understand the rate of uptake and the rate of expansion in housing units, then we could model what we think that looks like in certain school districts. And I don't know that anybody knows that, other than making some really big swags at this point.
And there's a difference between rental housing and owner's house, and so even that changes school population, school enrollments.
And I think we don't know what the mix is even going to be between rental and
Right, exactly.
So, lots of variables. So, we come to camera. Right. RTS delivery.
So, we do have a superintendent, we'll bring him in to meet you, Matt Donrake, who was the Assistant Superintendent. Grew up in Needham, grew up at the Duck, guess he loves to tell you. They're, I've seen the draft of the RP, it's going out, you know, this month or early next month, at least, you know. There, we're doing a comprehensive model of if we stay, drop off, what it should look like, and it should be, what would be options for pickup, and then what all of those associated across would be, so there's a lot of fun on that. It'd be interesting, it should really help us in looking at our capital plan as to whether we're going to make more investments in that.
Kate, what are you thinking the timeline will be on that study?
Well, we could, probably
Probably end of the year.
End of calendar year 23.
Yeah. End of calendar. Or sooner.
But so, there's two studies, right? Just two themselves?
There's two different studies, yeah. That one is the, you know, whether we should be a drop off or a pickup.
Yeah.
And if we are drop off, there are different models, like the Welsley model, or the individual sort of like trash compactor model, versus the model that we have, which is the big roll-offs and typical. And I'm sure there are other models.
Right. Maintain repair the barn at Ridge Hill.
So, it's on the plan, they're evaluating the, what they're going to need to do, and they'll be submitting a, they did do a future form, and they'll be submitting a capital form for it. I have been talking to the Community Theater about the possibility of extending the lease to allow them to build sets on the first floor, because we moved a lot of our equipment out, and they're, in the next year or two, going to be losing where they are building sets, is what they told me. So, if they could do that, it wouldn't be, you know, big crowds, it would be a couple of people. We'll hear more on that.
Well, and in case people are unaware, that, that has always been a shared building, or has been a shared building for a long time.
My whole time.
Yeah.
Several years.
All right. Identify funding for school master plan projects and participate in the planning process. Dave, I, so we have all just seen that school master plan. We talked about it at our last meeting, and so I think we're going to do that. Yes, we did do that at our last meeting. We will all certainly continue to learn, but it seems like the next step is really going to be submission of a statement of interest to the state, and trying to understand if the state has any interest in partnering with us.
Can we have the schools come in in February, March, to give us an update, just percolate it now, I'd just love to hear from them.
Dave, I was saying too. Is the MUDSIE tax increase is not in that financing plan? Yes, no, maybe?
It is not, that's something that will be coming for this month. And that can work. A concept that could help mitigate the impact.
The impact, okay. All right, so that was one of the reasons I asked about the capital plan over the weekend, was I wanted to go look to see if I could find that and just confirm.
It's up now.
That it wasn't, that it wasn't there.
If that one had been found first, and then as far as that
It goes to Select Ward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just with their input, I guess, with that, but.
And I just wanted to see if you could help me better understand the timeline. Like, I know there's a window of time for the MSBA decision and everything, so can you just lay out for me like what we think? How long is it going to take?
So, I understand they have to file an SOI by the end of April. And then they would know probably by the end of the calendar year if the
I thought it would be late fall.
Late fall. If they want to participate with us, and if they do, then there's a, you know, then there's an article for feasibility for, it's feasibility first, and then
Feasibility first, correct.
And that, the earliest that would be they would be made 24. And then, you know, usually you have design a year later, construction a year later. But that might get compressed a little, like, there might be like a special
If they decline, what else?
Then the
Same thing?
The boards will have to decide whether to wait and file it again next year, or build one at the school, and then they go.
It makes some if we were to get participation from the MSBA for Pollard, it makes a huge difference in that category. And the ability for us to achieve it I'm just, I'm going to say more easily, can I say more easily, Dave?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, even for Dave, I'm not going too far, I was saying, it would be easier if they would agree to part with us on that. And so, that's why it's really worth trying to put it out there and see if we can help them to understand the problem as we see it, and why that would be tremendously helpful.
And I'm assuming feasibility because of the number of the project would go to ballot, attention, or no?
The feasibility would just be for one school.
Feasibility would be for one school. Would be financed within the levy limit debt.
Okay. So, light enough in here, if you want me to get the light.
Work with stakeholders to secure funding for arts and culture strategic plan. You have any update on that?
Yeah, they're moving along. I mean, PC is providing the technical assistance. Amy Houson's, I understand, we've got participants from SCRTF, Council of Arts and Culture, Communicator, and on and on, Open Studios, like, a whole great group of folks. So, estimated completion, completion is 12:23, but they'll have a draft before then that will get before you.
Terrific, I'm looking forward to it.
We also have our poet laureate meeting on, on the plan for next this year. Westwood has one, so now, like, can't get ahead of that.
Sounds like a good thing to have.
Charlie Neady suggested it two years ago, and we're still on Zoom.
Work with the Park and Recreation Commission, Conservation Commission, and other stakeholders to set some relief for capital spending. So, we, we made some progress on that, I think. Certainly with Parks and Rec. I don't know if, how much CONCOM has actually weighed in, but I think that's something that we continue to work to improve in terms of having them think carefully about where they are.
It's certainly weighted on the Foster position, so I'm counting that. And then the Park and Recreation Commission did look, reviewed its capital plan and put them in priority order. It was really helpful. They cut some things out.
Okay. Identify opportunities for extended active and passive recreation facilities, not limited to the action sports park and additional boat ramps. That meeting has skipped off.
Seventeen, January seventeen.
I guess actually it's kicking along, is that this week?
Yes.
Next week?
Yeah. Heidi and I are co-chairing it.
All right. So, one of your other challenges, it's not explicit here, but that I think you know, is you have our friends at Dogs.
It is, it's later.
Yeah.
1.8.
Yeah, it's coming, all right.
We added 1.8 to 1.7.
Good. All right. Improve trailhead access to ensure clear and accessible access, consider creating a trails app, that is a next year thing. When we're actually hoping Foster might be acquired, and we'll have more, more links to that. Right? Evaluate expansion of off-ranch dog areas, moved up to be included in the active sports park question. Evaluate next steps for the use of Steven Palmer Building. So, that, we are looking to get the Crown and Shield representatives in to have a conversation with Marcus and me sometime soon, hopefully this spring.
With its Crown Shield.
Crown Shield, it has, holds the lease to the building. So, they are the
They only
They are the building manager, but yes. They have been a long-term.
How's the end date on that?
Twenty twenty seven.
Have you been in touch with them at all? Remember, it used to be spot in the past year, not, not for this, but
Not relative to the lease.
Okay.
They call sometimes on, on, for exceptions on the rental, but I haven't been along.
Yes.
I assume that I used to have the houses with food lots and public. Let me go back and ask a question, actually, because to me, this is the one piece of property that the town owns, right? So, when I think about you know, my trustee Patrick Lee, Trinity Financial, and the, the work that he's doing in Boston, where they're doing 60% affordable buildings, our mass communities, will that cap us in our ability to put in affordability? Or could we, as a Select Ward, choose to bring in developers who are willing to meet certain standards to redevelop that building?
Yeah, the restrictions just on the requirement under the zoning, but if you choose to go above and beyond.
You do another way.
You could do a little.
We could do a little.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. So, Dave, we're going to get there. Upgrade town seal to improve graphic quality and historical accuracy. Hasn't happened yet, but we are going to get there too, next year. Next year, Kevin's going to hold you to it, and we'll all be better for it. Evaluate opportunities for undergrounding of electrical wires. That's also on next year, I mean, it's something we continue to be interested in, and certainly I'm grateful to developers who put them underground in developments to go. Review and implement an alternative service delivery method for weights and measures inspections. How are the weights, measures governed? I know this is a hot topic.
Those gas stations, right?
As a reminder, this is a state statutory requirement that we shifted, we used to contract up to the state. They declined to fulfill the service any longer for us. This is to make sure that a gallon of gas, you actually get a gallon, the price paid, the brochure is what is listed. So, our building commissioner posted a job posting to hire a sealer. Unfortunately, in this labor market, we did not get any qualified respondents. So, we are putting our thinking caps on for Plan B. This is really to get us through this year, because Norfolk County, the commissioners of Norfolk County have expressed interest in doing a county service to cover this, because we're not the only community that's
Which we are interested in participating in.
We are, so we've been in regular communication with them, they're really just trying to figure out what would this look like as a county model. So, they've kind of asked us for information, we've supplied it, but we're kind of in a waiting mode for that right now. So, I think the only two updates are, what's listed here, we may need to transfer funds from expenses to salaries at the May Town Meeting if we end up being able to hire somebody to do this work. And secondly, if we hear from the county that they're ready to go for kind of an intermunicipal agreement, we would be in touch with you about that.
When you talk about hiring somebody, we're, we're presumably hiring somebody as a, as a service deliverer for us, but we're talking about, we're not talking about adding a headcount, that's what I
It would be a part-time position, so it's under nineteen and a half hours, so it would be just a temporary position for the, for this year.
More questions?
What happens if we don't find one?
And that is part of an active discussion with the building commissioner. There is a organization of sealers that are like the group that's actually certified to do this, so we're basically in touch with them to see what, what is possible. Most of them work for other communities, so.
So, were there other communities that, what, did they hire people earlier? Or were they already not participating in the state program, or?
The state, I think, only had 17 communities that they were still doing the service for. We were one of them, and then they
It's about a population threshold, right?
Yeah.
That'd be 20,000?
I think 20,000.
They let us in, and then they
So, other communities do it in a variety of ways. Some people have it as part of the building commissioner's job description, and other people hire a part-time person, there's a lot of different models.
We had a sealer before. You were trying to, right, Dave?
Yes, and the individual retired, and we couldn't fill the position. And then we found the state auction, which worked for us well for a number of years until the state cleaned up its operations and realized they couldn't provide the service any longer, under the statute.
Okay. Right, we're going to wish you good luck.
Thank you.
There is a point where we need one, right?
Yeah.
There is, and just to be clear, Dave Rich is serving in that function right now, so, for example, we did get one complaint, and so, we have the equipment to be able to go out and test weights and measures, and so he's, he's fulfilling that enforcement mechanism. I think it's more just his time committed to the proactive checking, that we would love to be able to hire somebody to do.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yeah.
Right, 1.13, create a voluntary local historic district under Chapter 42C for the property of Mo and Elizabeth. As you know, since we wrote this whole, we've learned that this is a bigger deal than we originally thought. But we had a bad start here with bringing the historic district in. We have all kind of collectively learned a little bit about what's going to be required to go through this process, and we'll be voting to get the committee up and running tomorrow.
Right, and then we'll solicit where we have to, the architects and the realtors and the commission itself, and get the committee
So, we continue to say, if somebody is a local architect or a local realtor and would like to participate, tell Mo.
And tell us.
Organization, and tell us.
We can suggest you make this happen.
All right. Goal number two, economically vital. We have two goals in here. 2.1, evaluate the Chestnut Street redevelopment that has been deferred to FY 2024, and evaluate expansion of snow removal efforts, including sidewalk plow strategies, also in FY 2024.
I just, Matt, here, I just want to point out that the Chestnut Street in the housing plan and the zoning changes for DHCD, like, there is some rezoning that would go on there, so it really does make sense to defer. Separate project.
And 3.1, with parking needs and other needs, and the
Yeah.
Things are going to change.
Yeah.
Moving down, so if the next one, I guess, we're just
Right.
Well, I would have said more, a large part of the work on this one will really need to be done by the Planning Board. And frankly, the Planning Board right now is focused on mass communities, which is where we need the focus, so we'll let them stay that path right now. The snow removal efforts. Is this wood?
I understand your point of view.
Maybe we'll never have snowing. But yes, we will get back to figuring out how we can continue to improve the services we're offering, removing snow. Meanwhile, I know Kara says, "Bought whatever new equipment she can that will do the best job possible on the various sidewalks and, and byways," yeah. All right, goal number three, accessible and connected. Evaluate parking needs, options, types, and zoning in Needham Center and Needham Heights business districts, and identify technology to manage parking. Kate, do you want to talk about this one, or?
This is Kate who is Sure, Katie's been busy. This is not all my work. So, we hired SandTech, we had a very competitive process, and they've been great. Again, Amy Houson is managing this one for us, I'm meeting with the team weekly. So, we had a public survey out to get some data leading up to this public meeting, January 26th, you will get an invite to that this week. This is more of a charrette.
It's already been in news, you need them, so hopefully people already have that one plotted on their calendar.
Yeah. It's going to be six to eight, and it's going to be more like workshop, charrette style. You can go to tables and talk to folks from SandTech and get, so the public can get their feedback about various parking components, and this is focused on the center and the heights. So, we're hoping this, that all of this work wraps up, I believe, in March.
Good amount of responses.
Yeah.
And this is really important prerequisite to both the, the reset of the downtown design and also the quiet zone on, on the Great Plain app, because it's just it's hard to, it's hard to design the crossings, we don't know where the sidewalks are going to be, or if they're going to be there, and so a lot of that will be kicking off next summer. I mean, the, the design for the quiet zone for the rest of the, we'll get to that, but the rest of the crossings is in there, in 24 capital budget limits.
Do we have any sense of where those responses, after we don't have come from?
I can ask, I, I haven't seen it summer, but
The reason I was wondering is, I was wondering if it might be useful for us to ask the superintendent to send something out to his list to hit school-aged parents, that invite them to try to complete the survey. I've seen it well through town resources that have caught out, but you're never sure who's paying attention to what. And you know, I'm presuming that the senior center has also distributed it to people there, but I just maybe being a little bit focused in trying to ensure that people have seen it would be.
So if I recall correctly, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was participating in a part in study with Metro.
Of something. Large residential complex parking, right? Yeah.
Yes, so they were looking at, yeah, parking lots specific to large multifamily housing.
So the reason I'm asking about that is because if we move this forward with some expectation of rezoning for, if not building larger residential multifamily and a lot of that zoning goes through some whether that's something that we can kind of pull in as well to look at with regard to parking.
You know, one of the tasks in our scope to Sand Tech was for them to make recommendations around parking requirements under the zoning. So there is a connection to multifamily housing, also to businesses in the center because that comes up quite a bit. Businesses not speaking to parking waivers. So, and we connect to Sand Tech with MAPC to share the data across those two different counts. So I think that'll be good information there to inform future policy.
And as I keep saying, I'm very much looking forward to a parking app. Just saying, it was in the survey. It was. Yeah. Who has quarters? All right, moving on, number three point two. Evaluate the role and composition of T-MAP Transportation Committee, Rail Trail Advisory Committee and Complete Streets Committee. Which there was no Complete Streets Committee, but other than that. So we did review the draft charging composition for a new, you know, revisited version of those committees. The committees are pleased to see us moving forward. Planning to meet with the existing transportation committee later this month. We've identified a date and that will be going out shortly to members. I think the challenge was David needed to find a meeting location, so that's a question, just to be sure we can find a place to meet if he calls. And we have a vote scheduled for us tomorrow on that. As a result of this, we will be, we would be moving forward with warrant articles that support the change in the bylaws.
So the action tomorrow is to amend the rail trail charge to rename the T-MAP and amend its charge. And then the mobility committee, which would be the overarching transportation committee, would wait until Tommy, after Tommy needed to see after it's biology.
But I think that all the folks who have been involved in that work are actually excited about it going forward. The transportation committee, people in particular, since their focus was largely on MBTA commuter rail kinds of things. It feels like the much broader portfolio lets them be more useful to us. And certainly transportation is priority and we could use that as. It was a great background. All right, three point three, seek funding for noise reduction, quiet zone feasibility, design and construction.
So we do have a funding article in the capital plan and we have an article on the warrant. We've also, Yarsin Harrington has done more research for us on some of the quiet zone rules as the FRA is interpreting them. And the consistent theme has been towns and cities cannot start or end a quiet zone at a private crossing, which they consider the golf course private. Also interesting, there appears to be that they're not required to blow the horn at a private crossing unless asked to by the select board. I'm not sure that we have ever asked or, we might have in the past, but it's certainly been their practice, so it's something we could ask them. But what we have learned is that it is legal to establish a quiet zone later. So you could start a quiet zone at the junction and run it all the way to the heights while you were trying to work out something with the Commonwealth. But we may have it worked out by the time we have the funding for design and construction of these projects. So my proposal to you would be for us to start again with the state, the MBTA and ask them either to consider it a public crossing or to allow us to not have it under the statute that says we don't have to, although without the gates there, I'm not sure I would want people walking over that. Once we've got gates up, we can certainly say it doesn't need to be sounded anymore. I do believe there's a lot, it's gonna be hard for us to get the attention of the MBTA in the next five, six months, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try and I, we're not gonna be, you know, we can't, we can't get designated quiet zone until we do the work anyway, which is not funded until May of twenty four. So we have some time, but does it make sense to start engaging with them now?
Absolutely. Yesterday would have been great.
No, this is great news because I remember when we first went to Boston years ago, was that, you know, that golf course was, oh, you can't do it with the golf course and we talked about doing it, was it a tunnel under that? It was, and the energy is like, no big deal, no big deal, get back to you.
And they were saying, they would do like four.
So this is, this is.
Then the golf club said, well, our equipment is five feet too wide for that.
Right.
And we'd have to lose a hole of our nine hole course. We tasked our former town engineer on replacing the bridge. So some people, Jim Matthews was here, he remembered the bridge. But with the height of the new trains, Tony, it was like something like two hundred feet run to go over. So the tunnel and the bridge are just not gonna work there with that configuration, so.
This is a way forward, so.
And then, you know, at least the product consultant said that there might be a way for us to repurpose the, some of the gates that we already have.
I am curious too, and I don't know, Yarsin Harrington, I've, multiple times as I've been sitting at those gates on West Street, it makes me think, you know, literally you're looking the train engineer in the eyes as he's blowing his horn at you. So he can see everybody is stopped. Why do they require, I mean, it's just a question. I understand these horns were designed for the planes with nobody there at high speed. So if you're coming from a stop and you can see the cars are stopped and you're looking the drivers in the eyes, do we really need to blow a horn? I mean, somehow we've eliminated all options, comes us, I just how we make that point clear to people. You know, but we have multiple intersections like that in town.
It was a federal.
The center of the town, it's the same deal where they're pulling through the intersection and you're looking at the cars that I've always caught.
Was it possible, this may be something that you all are already familiar with, because obviously you've got a lot of financial data to make the with, but I don't really understand the cost differential between, the cost differential and the logistics difference between the SSM and the ASM and then the resulting processes that come from each. Is there, is there some place that, does somebody have expertise that they can share with me? Or is there someone who could come to us and maybe explain what the process really involves? I feel like we're gonna get a lot of questions about this and certainly the ASM seems like it has a whole huge and possibly yearly process involved with it and though it might be less expensive on the front end, it seems like it's gonna be a whole heck of a lot work on the back, if not more expensive on the back.
So I think there are a lot of safety concerns with the ASM, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I guess I would just like to better understand all of like Chris talks about, there's not a lot of his.
Yeah, since we don't have a designer yet, I'm gonna have to think that through.
Three point four, evaluate the use of the rail corridor between Dover and Newton. This doesn't have.
Three point four one and three point four two have their update.
Okay. Three point four one, funding options for the rail trail extension from High Rock to Needham Junction.
Remember, we had a presentation.
We did.
A while back. So Director Public Works is working with the Directors of Public Works in Medfield and Dover on really the future of that end of the rail trail. Medfield's is lovely, just trying to figure where Dover's town administrator is in transition again, so. Although Carl Valenti, who's my predecessor, is back being acting in Dover, so that's always helpful. Yeah, so we're, you know, just what, what, you know, state or federal resources might be available, what grants might be available? Because that was a very expensive project. And they do, right now, if the connection was through Dover was a given, I think we're gonna have a much greater likelihood of getting funded by an outside source. We keep working on that and I think the board agreed, keep it on the agenda and try to find ways to fund, to find funding for it.
Right, three point four point two is the piece of the shared use way between Needham Heights and the city of Newton.
So we had a kickoff last week, we have a great group, we, Nuck and Alan is representing the transportation committee and then James Goldstein, the rail trail, and also Big Paul and the rail. And then we have a resident and a counselor from Newton and several staffers from Newton and then a number of staffers on our side, so. It was good kickoff, GPI has, they have connections with UMass and their drone system, so they've already done some, so I'm thinking about how to do some flyovers, they've walked it. John DS, who's the principal actually of the Needham, probably that amount of other projects. He, in fact, he did that presentation for you on the pre-signal and what, why the pre-signal would be. Might actually be able to do a question that Heidi asked, so I'll see if I can talk. So that, that RFP, so that's out, we have a firm and we're having a, by the second meeting in the middle of February and basically the conversation was they will see whether the existing layout would support the dual use and does it actually fit? And then if the answer is no, then we bring everybody up together and say, what are we gonna do next? Like, we're not gonna just go forward, so it's a much bigger conversation. If it's yes, but you know, we have to, I mean, in a lot of places, it's way up and, you know, so how expensive a project is it and can be phased and so I think it's gonna be a really interesting project.
Any other questions about that one? And that one came from an earmark.
So this first segment is only considering multi-modal? Or it's also gonna provide us some feasibility on just bike and that strand?
The, the, the charge is, does bike pad and some kind of transit, even if it's van, fit? And if the answer is no, then we'll regroup and talk about whether we're gonna keep, I mean, kind of keep going and doing feasibility on the, on the bike pad.
And the intent was that the study would support both, but, but the first option would be. Three point five, evaluate and make a final determination of the appropriate plan for downtown redesign phase two. So we'll talk about that after.
After the meeting.
So it'll still be a while. Three point six, prioritize funding for the Central Avenue Center Street Bridge. It is in the omnibus budget package.
We got design funding. Congressman Knopf and Claus picked our project, so that's great. Chris Twelley really, who was the Dover town administrator, did a great job, his staff over there. And so the full project after the design is in the tip, so Dover's taking the lead for us on that.
And is Dover still gonna be able to take the lead?
Yeah. There's a lot of interesting features about this bridge because as anybody's ever driven over it, there's a truck coming the other way, like white knuckling. Is it's a historic bridge, so the historic bridge advocates and the bike advocates are really gonna have an interesting discussion about whether this bridge, you know, is replaced as its historic cell port is, you know, how it works, like we did over at Elliot Street, we did the Cantley Bridge. There's not a lot of real estate. We've also talked to, we talked to the congressman about the possibility of running a water made under the bridge or in the bridge some way so that we could provide support to Dover either permanently or for emergency services because their, their experience is very difficult. They're mostly well in Dover, but the downtown, they have a private one.
Well, and this is the bridge where we actually may need it to provide a bike connection for the rail trail purposes, right?
Yep.
So lots of complicated factors. Three point seven, evaluate the feasibility of last mile in-town transportation options. So we're coming up on an RFP for the study or for what is affectionately known as NEMO.
We have a small working group. For instance, Sandy Robinson, the community council, our health and services staff, some of the transportation, so they'll be helping to guide that study and we have to spend that money by the end of this week, so we'll have something to share, see how feasible that is.
Did you think about including a parent, given Newton's experience?
I can ask you. We talked about students, there's so many.
So in Newton, what, what has surprised them is that some of the biggest users of NEMO are like middle school and early high school age kids who are not driving, that it is providing a main source of transportation for students after school to after school activities and around town to a friend that parents authorize for them to do that, that it is a way that they're providing one of that transportation.
Yeah, the notion of, the consultant will be interviewing schools, but having a parent has to find out.
And they made everything very open, like I said, I ran into over the summer and like, please call us and I know you're a touch of the office. Please let us know anything you need and we'll tell the pitfalls that we went into.
There's a new director of transportation over there, friend Josh Ostroff, we used to be, as you know, well, you know, from needing, so that's great.
And schools, I was gonna say huge in schools before, he was a special member.
Yeah.
All right, goal number four, healthy and socially thriving. Do you want to talk about the William James?
Right, so one of your guiding principles is to provide DEI professional development and we have a full, a full year project with William James College on foundation setting leadership. And so we have about sixty members of our leadership team. They've been through, three of the five, the next one is coming up in February. It's been, it's very, it's actually been very well received and people have really shared a lot and learned a lot, so that's our foundation setting and we'll be moving on to new programming in FY twenty four. And then you had, another part of your goal is that there's regular updates on staff measures and the Director for Researches came in on November, that was a great report on all the things that they're working on in that, in that department.
For the three that you mentioned, for the three that you've had, what were the topics in those? And then what has a kind of a follow-up been after those have been completed, like any weeks or months out or anything like that?
Yeah, we've covered topics such as kind of foundational setting, like having the same definitions and language around diversity, inclusion vocabulary, we talked about spheres of influence, so these are our leaders in all our departments, so kind of what's in their sphere of influence personally, professionally. We've talked about cultural competency continuum and we're pivoting to talking about putting concrete pilot programs and actions into place. So how would you apply like a race equity lens to a program if you were looking to update it or see if the outcomes are differential? So the next two are kind of pivoting to that from like theoretical and getting people to talk and getting people to kind of think about things in a new way. And then such a four and five is really like concretely, what are you gonna do with it?
Kind of action steps, thank you.
We have very good trainers who had to hold everybody back for three full sessions that we're not gonna jump right to action, we need to talk.
Okay, four point one, all of you just recently had an update, work with the new golf club to extend the lease of town land to allow the club to finance improvements. As we said, we, Marcus and I met with representatives of the golf club right before the holiday break and they had in fact figured. And they had in fact figured out some ways to finance these improvements. So there's not the immediate pressure to extend the lease now. So they've asked us to defer doing that, but they will need us to extend the lease before the lease ends. Because obviously people will not want to join the club if they think it's, and it might be imminent. So there's a sweet spot. I'm not sure when it will be. We'll come back and talk in the fall. It may not be this fall either, you know, we'll, we'll just revisit and figure out when the right time is for them to go through that process.
We can include enough some sort of work around that training.
So we're fully on board with helping us with the train crossing whenever we can find a solution that we think that the town will be supporting itself. Yeah. They have been a good partner so far, although so far we've presented options that would eliminate a hole on the nine old cars, things like that, that, that really didn't quite work. So. Four point two, explore the option of petitioning to rename Hemlock Gorge to an Hoyens Grant. Also a noble goal, FY twenty four, we are going to get there too. Four point three, identify ways to institutionalize community conversations around rights, race, diversity, equity and inclusion. Build relationships and a stronger understanding of different perspectives and lived experiences. So we have a few things going on here. You'll see the update here. There, there has been participation in the resilience network. We continue to work with the Human Rights Committee and they are getting ready and partnering to do a multicultural fair this spring, which will be the first time that they've done that. The library has been bringing in some fabulous programming in this area. And anything else, we will look at what the next steps are. Once we get back here, our goal has been, you know, Kate has been working with staff to go through the foundational training that we just talked about with James. Once that was in place, then we need to cycle back again to committees. But Kate's goal was that the, the staff that the committees are working with need to understand what we're trying to accomplish first. So we're trying to get that foundation in place and we'll go back and do workshops with committees. I think the plan is to start actually with some of the Health and Human Services boards maybe for thinking about. Okay. All right. So influx, but that had been finished. Four point four, make intentional efforts and identify creative ideas for community outreach to diversify the candidate pool of committees, measure progress. So that, that is something that the Vice Chair of the Board has been working on now for a couple of years. I don't know that we've really found ways to measure progress. And I don't know if that's something we want to put our heads together, maybe and see if there's any way we can think about that. But, but I do think we've continued to focus on being sure that openings are well advertised broadly. And we've seen increases in applicants.
Yes, and I would say increase as far as diversity, diversity in age, gender and, and background and, you know, culturally speaking, it is. I think one of those things where the more that, that we do and the more intentional we are with that topic and making sure that we're looking and, and broadening the searches as much as we can, we're going to have those results. But it's going to take time and it has taken time, but I really, really enjoyed my time with Miles in the vice chair role, kind of going through and meeting different applicants and learning more about people and, you know, what interests them about the town. You know, we have some people that have been appointed that have lived here less than a year and some people that have lived here, you know, twenty years. It's because of the passion and, you know, in those interview process and listen to why they want to be involved and what it means to them and their families and be, and using their expertise to help guide us and help, you know, collaborate has been really fascinating. So continue to do that and it's over vice chair next. And, you know, taking that mantle over and I think it will just continue to get better and better. Especially having Miles help out with that. That's been great. Very much so.
Thank you, Miles.
Yes.
Four point five, explore benefits of creating a dedicated position for diversity, equity and inclusion.
So we had talked about finding ways to explore how it's working in other communities. In the interim, we have been informed of a company that can provide some services for us, but we haven't even met with them yet, but just, I think there's a meeting this week too.
Yeah.
So coming, coming up, they, they focus on helping cities and towns who haven't got there yet, but they might be able to fill in some gaps. So we'll let you know how that goes and whether, whether we think it makes some sense in the interim.
Four point six, provide support to other boards and committees on how to apply new principles to their work, including training opportunities and sample goals. So there I had just mentioned that, that that was our goal next, once we have the staff training. So we'll continue to figure out how to move that. Conduct focus groups, sorry, four point seven, conduct focus groups with BIPOC community members, identify strategies, ensuring that all members of the community feel welcome as outlined in the new revision statement and guiding principles. There we're gearing up to do a couple of focus groups this spring.
We have a, we have a volunteer facilitator. So we're working on an invitation letter, getting some dates from the facilitator, getting those done.
Great. I look forward to seeing what we can learn. Four point eight, work with the Human Rights Committee to develop a discrimination complaint process and provide forums where individuals feel comfortable discussing their concerns related to diversity, equity and inclusion. The Human Rights Committee is getting ready to come in and speak with us on January twenty fourth. So coming your way soon. Four point nine, develop a plan for a committee observance of Juneteenth. We've reviewed a charge for a committee. I know we advertised for the committee. Have we seen some responses?
Yes, we've had some interviews and we're still in the process and making sure, you know, if and when we do this, that we have as much input from, you know, all different types of backgrounds that hopefully will be want to apply. And it's just kind of reaching out, getting more responses. So we, if we do want to do it at a very high level and don't want to do it just to have it, to say that we did, could be very intentional about the process of this and you know, not being out of the park in the sense that we are very intentional in the way that we kind of streamline this in the communities around us that we work with that have done this and have been successful in, in terrible, you know, and how we do this. And, and I know why we're doing it, but yeah, very delicate, I would say.
Mark it on your calendar now. Four point ten, consider options for recognizing indigenous people's Day, Columbus Day or Italian Heritage Day.
We didn't assign this anywhere. I wonder if it's a twenty twenty four conversation at this point, given more time.
I think that's decided.
I would like a nice celebration for Italian heritage.
Spoken like a man with a Italian heritage.
But I will say Italians and really in this town and, you know, you know, my dad, I won't get out, you know, he's still alive, ninety-two or nineteen thirty, a lot of Italians at that time really built the kind of medium work from the kind of medium from engineering to developing roads and houses. So there's a lot of history of Italians in town, so not just me.
Yeah. Four point eleven, implement the Valor Act and consider aligning the administration, administrative process for both Valor Act and senior court programs. So we were, we are ready to implement the Valor Act, I think at this point, right? But we, we've been looking for filling a role and then that person will be asked to implement and to align, right?
We will come before you. So we have a new Deputy Veterans Service Agent, TGH Dusky, who I've yet to meet, look forward to meeting him. He's just brand new. But we'll come before you with a proposed program kind of eligibility, kind of if we could participate in this, what would the rules be around it? And so then once that gets your sign off, then we would.
And then goal number five, a safe community. Five point one, actively monitor progress on the law enforcement recommendations that the police chief presented to the subcommittee on June eighth, twenty twenty one. That was the date, I think, of the original presentation. There's been several presentations since then. And here we learned that the chief is scheduled to come back to us in February.
And that should be the twenty eighth.
And Kate, I think at that point, they're sort of in their annual cycle again, right? So we should see that annual reporting from the chief at this point.
Madam Chair, just a question. This is more of a general question. You know, we had the poll, or the survey, I should say, that, you know, biannual survey for town. And they were, you know, we got some results from that. And just in general, as it relates to our goals, have we pulled anything out and saying like, okay? I just reminded when it came to, I know there was a whole thing on, you know, safety and how safety feels, a high number. But I'm just wondering how we're using that, how we're using that survey in a lot of these goals. And maybe it's just, you know, enforcing that we're actually doing a great job on a lot of these areas. But I'd just be curious as we move forward, what we can pull from that survey.
That we didn't have a huge amount of data on respondents, so. I mean, if we're going to use those results in that way, I'd kind of be interested in knowing who the respondents are, because that would change feedback.
Right, but it was statistically valid. So unless you try to drill down or have a different questions next time. But I'm just wondering what, what we actually gleaned from that, instead of saying, you know, things are great, here's a nice presentation. And maybe the data can be different, but I think it's a great tool. I just don't know how we're using that tool. So just kind of a general question. I just thought of it, because when it came to police, we kind of looked at those areas, but I know there are a lot of other areas.
It is an interesting idea when you set goals next summers on these major categories, one through seven, what does the survey data tell us?
Right. I guess that's more of a general.
And, you know, continue to refine the, the demographics that we do have. It is weighted.
That's what I was going to say, because like the numbers may have not been large or turnout was not, you know, a large number, but it's weighted in the sense that can you just explain that? I mean, in a, in a short way, because what Heidi's saying is like, and what, and what Matt is saying is statistically, statistically right. But as far as actual numbers of people that filled it out, it's weighted to adjust for the lack of actual.
So by way of example, we made a presentation to the resilience network on this, the survey data by race and the, the race data that we have is white and non-white. But they do, they do wait the results to make it more accurate in terms of, and I'm now beyond my survey, but, but Nicole, who, who, that's his. She explained it better. And she agreed with it. So maybe that is something we could do when we present it next. The next one is to really get into the, the survey methodology and how that weighting works. Yeah. Those are good, two good points. Thanks.
Okay. Work with public safety unions to reach agreement on alternative civil service system. Work with all stakeholders, implement alternative recruitment and promotion systems for public safety employees. So there, the question is that we of course negotiated with the unions and with a proposed system for recruitment and promotion. And that got bargained last year and went through town meeting and approved by town meeting. However, to make it actually happen, the question is, what are the next steps to make it real? We had some question about whether it would need to go on our ballot and be taken to the town for the town to also weigh in as a whole on this particular decision. But at this point, there will be a meeting with Representative Garland and the Chair of the Special Commission that will take place later this month that may have some new information that we can consider and looking at what our options actually are. And if there's an option that doesn't require going to the ballot, that will still let us implement what we have approved. Then that would be of interest to us. So, but we need to be assured that we will have a way forward.
So it could happen at the state level or at the town level?
Well, there's different things happening on different tracks and it could be that what's going to happen at this state level will not harm what the town has done. I think that's the question. Is something going to happen at the state level that would harm what the town has done? So we actually have to make the towns view very crystal clear.
I think it's, it's, it's also important to note that the Special Commission believes it hasn't finished its work. So there are, I can't remember now, eight, eight through eight and fifteen communities that have voted to get out of civil service that are, had intended to do it the way many other communities did it by way of a formal petition and a special act. So the, the legislature is not acting on those until this commission finishes its work. So we, we are fortunate that we are, we have a scheduled meeting with the Chair of the Commission and just have all the information to give you on what we should do next.
Great.
Five point three, work with the Chief of Police on updating the annual reporting and evaluating the possibility of creating a quarterly status report. So we now do have, I think, a statistician or somebody who can work as an analyst. There, we're expecting to see their report for the first time in February and we can have this discussion about quarterly, which has been a question that Marcus raised first that we raised as a board to the police. All right. Goal number six, responsible government. Six point one, about reviewing the funding goals and use of stabilization funds in conjunction with the Finance Committee and stakeholder boards. Dave, that review is still ongoing, right? It, I, it hasn't wrapped up. There's been discussion about different stabilization, but I don't think they've come back to recommend changes in levels or funding goals.
The, the Finance Committee, the levels that we discussed at the last meeting of the board, select board were the levels that the Finance Committee was receptive to supporting. And they did have a discussion on those. And there was just general agreement. And that more would be said to town meeting in terms of, I believe it's Article two, committee reports to, to town meeting to explain how we use the different stabilization funds as part of our total financial plan. The one exception to that is what we discussed earlier this evening is the debt service stabilization fund that was put aside when we were looking at the other stabilization funds. And that's something that will be coming forth in January, which first of the present to the select board, then would present to the Finance Committee.
But that's not happening tomorrow night. So that's the end of the month, January, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Six point two, support employee recruitment and retention initiatives.
So we will be recommending in the FY, well, not in the budget, in the, in the warrant, a temporary program where we would hire participate with the ICMA Fellowship Program, or we could have somebody come in and be dedicated to recruitment and retention and really start moving some of those projects that we had presented to us last summer along. It sounds like, you know, it's the kind of thing that we could explore. It really is a temporary program, so it makes sense to use it as a warrant article, but we could also use it to explore whether indeed there's a need for more staffing in HR or, you know, for some period, they need to bring more staffing to do that. So I think this is going to be, if we could get this funded, it would be a great opportunity for HR to start moving in a direction of, because, I mean, we were talking to the school committee just, was that last week? Just last week? Okay. This is a critical issue for them too. It's just, it's, it's, it's very, very hard to hire people.
So Madam Chair, do we expect policy recommendations to come out of that? For example, I know we talked about town employees on the school side being able to go to, so that would come a kind of out of this?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And then a recommendation to the board for policy?
Yes, and, and do, you know, the legwork and the surveying and, you know, how many we might expect, you know, as that example, yeah.
Any other questions about that? Six point three, evaluate the possibility of developing a community master plan. That's something that's a next year question. Six point four, develop the select board committee code of conduct. So we have our subcommittee. I know they've had a chance to meet once. Looking at meeting again, well. So we have our subcommittee. I know they've had a chance to meet once. Looking at meeting again, well. Thank you guys for making progress and look forward to when you're ready to come and give a report.
Sure.
Any, any comments you want to make?
There was a question of, does the Select Board just want it as two Select Board members and no other members, community members on it?
No, the Board's a committee, or sorry, no others.
So I, I think I like having the two Select Board members on it. The meetings are posted, right? That's my understanding.
We're gonna have a really nice amount of participation, which I think personally would be my, you know. Keep the official committee members to just. But also that we would encourage and really request the public participation that we started off with. And some of the folks who joined us really had excellent comments and. Even though maybe the official committee members.
Okay.
And anyone else?
Right, no, it's, it's a topic that we're all interested in, but I think we do best to best to provide the recommendation. Thank you. Six point five, expand Select Board community engagement efforts and ensure continuity continuation of the downed community staffing.
So the one key priority here is that we'll be recommending that the PIO position be included in the operating budget. For this conversation year after year. But another one of these is, we had a conversation about sort of augmenting this goal by. Having a structured office hours program. So also here is a, is a document that we would appreciate any feedback on. Of, you know, how you might structure this. You might have bi-weekly office hours, that one person, one member. Both documents are there, Keith, if you need the other.
Reading my very small screen.
You want bigger font?
Saving here, but yes, it's gonna be recycled, that's okay, thank you.
So, you know, and really very, I asked Miles to put this out so that we have something to react to. So this is sort of like, it would be bi-weekly and the members would pick the day and it's expected, it might be an hour. It could be in person, it could be at town hall, it could be in a coffee shop, it could be on Zoom. It'd be rotated. We were hoping that there might be a, a master calendar for the quarter. And each individual member would have, you know, picked the week that they would be doing it. And then it would be great if we could put it out in the newsletter the week before, so we'd have that calendar. We, we'll be getting another Zoom account that we can then, if members want to do it, we can make alternate hosts and then we can move on.
Madam Chair, just a couple of things, we've talked about this since I've been on, even before, right? So I just think it's important that the member says that they don't speak for the Board, you know, it's just known that. Sometimes people think that person speaks for the Board. And then second, I guess, during committee reports would be the time, it would be nice to hear, okay, I had, I met with three constituents. And here's what they said, I think that would be appropriate.
That's, that's an excellent way to do it. We were trying to figure out, it should be notes and that's kind of a lot to expect people to do.
Right, maybe a report at the committee report team. But I think it's a great idea. We just could never kind of figure out the, the way to do it. But this, you know, this looks, it makes a lot of sense.
I think it's worth a try. And I think it will also be important that citizens who come understand. That you may not have, none of us have solutions in the moment. Now, sometimes we'll know the answer to the question, but often I suspect more information will.
And that should be kind of the language as they're crafting that up.
Yeah, so maybe two weeks to get back to us and then we can start it in February, get the calendar together. Any comments on the, on the format? Might as well create a calendar and then we can plug it in.
So the, so the goal is that when it's your week, that you find a time that works for you during that week. And that if you're going to be at town hall, then it needs to be when town hall is open. That's the one rule.
Okay.
Excellent.
So, so we don't have to open it just for Select Board members to do this.
What if you need that, Heidi, let us know.
All right. I just heard, even my husband said, you know, those town newsletters are pretty darn good. So you could tell.
Subscription was up to five thousand.
Yeah, we are the town newspaper right now.
Pretty good.
We are, so there you go.
We need, we need some competition.
It's coming.
It's coming, yes, it's coming.
Six point six, collaborate with stakeholders on the development of short videos on how town government works. As you were talking about the funds, I was thinking those various stabilization funds, that could be another one of our explainers, short videos. There we go, but the PIO is going to, I think, help us.
Right, and the lead of channel was already thinking about it, so they're collaborating on it.
Okay. Six point seven, update the Select Board's appointment protocol. We have done that, that's finished. Six point eight, review elected and appointed status. So we did review that. I have been going through a meeting with different groups. And the end goal after those meetings, if it makes sense, will be to have a warrant article. To change some things from elected to appointed. And of course, you know, there are, there are questions, we have a finance committee about, you know. If these roles are appointed by the Select Board, is that some problem with them feeling like they're overly accountable to the Select Board? Or only there to do the Select Board's wishes and would the Select Board derail them from their primary duties? The FinCom asked that question, yes. And I assured them that it isn't our intent to change anybody's job description. Or to make them violate the terms of trust funds. So we would expect them to continue to do their jobs. And it's not clear that making this change in a formal way, which is, I think, where we're headed for recognition. Will change what's actually been happening, because as people will recall, most of these positions have been appointed lately. And then once somebody's appointed, then they've been willing to run. Because you currently have to run, but, but the appointments haven't happened first, so, so we'll see where this goes.
Madam Chair, and I just, you know, I support the idea of this. I'm just concerned, you know, with comments like that. And I think six point nine we'll get to, which I think is the real critical piece, that this might get to seem too much like. Our Board is trying to expand too quickly into these areas. And I agree with it. I just think that, you know, I just want to make sure that six point nine personnel board doesn't get hurt. Because we're trying for all these things at once. So if anything were to move, I'd, I'd want to move this, depending on, once we get to the warrant article, we hear from people. And, but if there's a lot of discussion on it, I just want to make sure we don't lose the personnel board. Because I think that's really the critical one right now.
Madam, you say too quickly, do you mean, like you said, all at once? Or that the different boards or committees that we may be trying to go from appointed. To like, yeah, elected to appointed, but they're not ready for that yet.
Well, I know Marion, you're gonna have a discussion with them, so they might be ready. I'm just thinking, town meeting might see a list on the warrant saying, they want to do this, they want to do this, they want to do this. And it might look like we're trying to take things away from the electorate and, you know, voting. And say, kind of consolidate, but I know why we're doing that, because really, right, we're appointing them right now. But I just don't want it to look like too much of a, you know, grab. So that's just my concern, and I hear from not only members of the Finance Committee, but other members of town meeting, so just.
So if you think it, should we go forward, it will need to come with some education as well.
That's when you might want to have a public hearing on too.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, definitely, I think you're right.
March-ish.
Definitely.
Just start plugging, keep plugging them in.
Then we'll get a feeling.
So Matt just alluded to six point nine, which is the governance review, including the role of the personnel board. I know that all of you have received a recommendation for the personnel board. And Kate did visit with them last week and had a conversation that was well-received. Again, because their, their role is another one that is in the bylaw. The role really has changed over time from when it was originally law to is now. We're trying to find a structure that is most appropriate use of people's time and most appropriate use of their talents. In terms of supporting the town.
So Marion and I are going back to them next.
I was gonna say, that's not this week, right? Six point ten, work with the Finance Committee to create a working group exploring the operating budget process and other finance-related issues. So we don't have a working group at this point, but we did meet with them. We reviewed what is anticipated for the warrant, including things like these potential bylaw changes. So that they would have visibility into what was coming on the warrant. You will recall that last year, there was some concern that they were surprised by things in the warrant when they read it in April. Even though it had been discussed by our board since February. So without giving them a preview, might be. Six point eleven, record, a review, recodify the non-criminal disposition by law. So we have that coming our way tomorrow night. I think we can hold on that until we discuss the recommendation. Six point twelve, review and update alcohol regulations. So Marcus and I had an initial look at some work that Miles organized for us. Working with Everfree from Yars and Harrington to update the town's alcohol regulations. We provided some feedback about a couple of things that were important to us. And, but we'll come back to the Board as a recommendation for some updates and changes in a future. Mostly reorganization. With a few.
So there is a reorganization, segment to administrative nature, since the Board adopted various statutes at different, or not statutes. Whereas regulations at different point of time, we order them, so they actually flows at like section twelve goes before section fifteen. And then it's one day, just make it look nicer. But there's a few decisional aspects in there that are some changes to policies. A one big one is gonna be a recommendation about reporting staff rosters and training to the town. In a more active manner, to make sure that we have a better status of who is working at these establishments. And making sure that they're trained in a much more active manner than we've been doing in the past. Updating also some of what training can count, so it's not just, so it's not dated anymore. It's more current, the language will allow for the language to age better. There's also gonna be a recommendation in there to mandate that the restaurants or package stores have. A scanning technology with a software or hardware. It's big by nature, but they need to have something, they need to use it, is gonna be the recommendation. And as part of this process, before we come back to the Board, we want to make sure that we run this by all relevant town agencies first. Because we have smaller, Katie and Amy Helson were also a part of, in addition to Everfree and Yars Harrington. And once we get the final draft document, we're gonna draft that, we need town staff. Yeah, the bar service area. Absolutely, right now, there's, there is vague language, not vague language. There's an absence of language relative to counter service at restaurants. And we, this Board has authorized a few restaurants that do provide counter service alcohol. We actually had one of those restaurateurs recap it and say, hey, I actually don't know where I fall into this right now. And actually requested that, that'd be better defined in the regulation. So there is a draft definition of the bar service area to help make sure that our restaurateurs know better where, where they stand.
We have the bar service area, really old, sort of old-fashioned piece of it. If you recall, restaurants had, patrons had to be waiting to eat. So then, the Board was very concerned that with their restaurants not turned into bars. So anything that was appeared to be bar seating had special rules. I think the committee's been looking at as to whether that really matches what we've been saying on some of the other pages of the.
And the fact that many people now sit at a bar and eat dinner.
Yes.
You know, that it's just a place that's comfortable to eat.
And this was almost written as if it was a waiting area, and now it's not really.
And, and I, I did just want to say, I know that people on the Board know that in the latest underage alcohol checks. There were again, a number of issues that were found. But I think it's fair to say that a lot of those issues, again, are with new employees. We're seeing our people have a change of management. And ensuring that people are ready to be operational is part of our concern.
I would just like to add, and I know if we can do this, maybe strongly suggest that tip certification is in person. Because I know there's an online option. I know when people come in, say, it is online, but you know what happens with online, anything. So it would just be nice for them to make that commitment to come and.
I think it's a caveat that Miles.
Yeah, so we've actually gotten some feedback from some licensees after some in-person tips trainings in the past. And the package store folks love the in-person. It's highly effective, it's highly useful for them. The restaurateurs were less warm to it. It seemed to be a little more applicable to the package store population. And the restaurant is actually like that the tips training can be targeted towards a restaurant serving setting vice a package store serving set. So that was some of the feedback. And after this Board provides feedback, when presented in February, we're gonna also take this back to the licensees. And request their feedback on the proposal once this Board's seen it.
That makes sense.
That's the same thing in the meeting.
Yeah, right.
Why don't do it in person?
All right, six point one three, complete formal appointment of the head council. We did that this fall. Six point one four, update policy governing use of public outdoor spaces under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. And so that is something that we're still hoping.
It's on Miles' goal list, so you have, he has to get through non-criminal and alcohol, and then turn to public spaces.
So our, our hope is to have it in place before we reopen the common. Well, maybe not before we reopen the common, right? It's gonna be the beginning of April.
We've, we've done actually some extensive staff level work. And there's a few tweaks to be made, some draft SOPs to be made. But there's been a huge involvement from a number of stakeholders within the town government. So it's been, it's been very fruitful so far. I think we'll be ready to have it this spring, maybe not right by April, but close to it.
And I know citizens of the town are excited with what they're seeing on the town common. To everybody who hated all the trees that came down and everything is now speaking up. It doesn't look so bad. It looks pretty good even. We are looking at having reopening at the beginning of April.
And interestingly, correspondingly, those who had events on the common who moved to Greensfield now love Greensfield. So that'd be great, like more use of all the.
Yes.
More use of all the spaces is a good. Exactly, goal seven, environmentally sustainable. Seven point one, develop a climate action plan. So we, the Climate Action Plan Committee is, has hired or is hiring a consultant. I don't think it's hired yet, but I know. I expect I'll hear about that later this week. I think there's a meeting. Right, and all the subgroups have a meeting so that we have a variety of areas. That are ready to provide initial recommendations from the working groups to the consultants to help organize and, and pull it together.
There are a lot of subgroups and they work a lot. Every time I try to find someone, they're at a subgroup.
Correct, they're working right along.
Amazing.
So that is, it's a dedicated group that's working well. Seven point two, identify parcel acquisition to comply with land and water conservation fund requirements. Kate, do you want to update about your site block?
Yes, so.
Presuming we can actually acquire foster, it's good news.
Right, so it's really important.
We'll wait for the train home.
Last one.
He's looking at the stop car, I guarantee.
The, the National Park Service, just by way of background, provided funding. I forget, hundred thousand, in that, you know, not, in that range, in the seventies to help build Rosemary Pool.
Nineteen seventies, that was the date of the commitment of funds, yes.
And so the town agreed never to convert the property from recreational use. And so, um, the town agreed never to convert the property from, uh, recreational use. And so the park service determined that the second floor of the bathhouse was a conversion. And, um, instead of, we, we do have parking wreck in there and health. Uh, our representative from the state tried really hard to say that health and recreation were hand in hand. But the way the park service decided is that the entire second floor. And then some confusion about whether parking spaces assigned to the public health department um, should also be in there. So we did have an appraisal in end of twenty nineteen for determine that seventeen thousand five hundred plus or minus square feet is, uh, owed to the, owed to the town, um, in, uh, in, in payment for the conversion of the air rights over the building that we already had. Um, so we've really been working diligently on this and trying to either and, and the appraiser using the federal yellow book guidelines for land and water conservation and park service appraisal determined that the value of that seventeen thousand square feet plus or minus in twenty nineteen was five hundred thousand dollars. So we have to, working to find a parcel worth five hundred thousand dollars that also achieves active recreational and, and, and the best possible use would be one that is on a water body. So our joy in the foster property is that all those can be met. So, um, we'll be talking further about, um, identifying with all our stakeholder groups, but identifying an area along the river where we can send it to the park service and say, in this general area along the river where we're committed to, um, uh, passive recreation and boating essentially, which is what we had down at Rosemary Street. Um, would they consider it? This can take them two years. So we are embarking on this now. Um, and so when we took our, the, the staffers at the D E P, they implement the National Park Service work in the state. D E P does a lot of, they are the, the designated, um, agents for many federal agencies. So she went out with us and, um, it was December twenty ninth and it was gorgeous out and it was a beautiful day to walk at the property. And she agreed that this is something she thought that the service, but it's an interesting, very interesting is that she said, you can't, the National Park Service will not accept it if you've already bought it. And so I was thinking in my head, how are we going to do this? But then, then as it turns out, if you buy it for general municipal purse purposes, you're fine. Because then you can designate the portion that you need to purchase. So the way that we, um, that everybody agreed in the, in the uh, and town meeting agreed really is going to help us in this particular case as well, because that, that will be a way we can do this service. So, um, we're just, that'll be going on the entire time that whatever happens with the foster, um, property application and that goes on. Probably two years later, say, remember that land we bought? Now we want this part of it. The first piece that we have agreed, uh, that we would talk to all the stakeholders, um, how it should be designated. This, this would be the first one. That's the update on land.
I'm very glad we stepped to our guns on that only this.
And when I told her that you had adopted a goal, they were a little, they wish that we had done this faster, uh, but when I told her we adopted a goal and I showed her the document, they were very.
We had done this faster.
Well, we, we've been, even way before Foster, we've been trying to find something. We opened, we opened the pool in twenty eighteen.
Corners of lots from other people that they weren't using.
We, uh, we were having a.
Just to be clear, I mean, the alternative to finding land would be to pay five hundred thousand dollars.
It could be. They don't like it. They may not approve it.
Because it's not their goal. I get that, but I'm just.
You'd have to say there's.
Clarification for folks to sound badly about this destination at, at town meeting, but it really makes a lot of sense now.
Yes, we would really have to show that there's nothing we could buy and I'm not sure. Oh, it might be hard.
Um, seven point three, sponsor a tree summit.
We'd ask that you move this one to twenty four. We just. You're not going to get it.
Okay.
Yeah. Seven point four, work with the planning board to explore zoning options to allow solar canopies on public and private property. Um, I don't know weird that is, whether that's something that's on their list or bring to town meeting this spring. I know that they're starting to discuss what might come forward. But I don't remember hearing this particular one discussed.
Sorry, I don't understand.
A ground mounted ones, are they allowed and, you know, the ones that you can put on?
Not in the parking lot, I don't think, not by right.
Okay.
I think the challenge is. So, so we've written our letter, but I, I'm trying to remember to ask. I did not remember to ask where they are. So when, when the goal says work with the planning board to, how, how would we, other than writing a letter, what would we do to work with them? Do we have suggestions about what we should be doing to work with them?
I guess the next step would be to, they did have a goal setting meeting.
They did, um, and I'm forgetting if this landed on it, but if they wanted to move forward with it, then, um, they would run the formal process to bring that article to town meeting, but, um, members could either participate individually or you could support it on the, on the warrant. So in the meantime, just tell them to.
To draft something, like to draft something, get someone in front of us.
Seven point five, evaluate regulations governing asbestos and lead protection mitigation on knockdowns. And again, the requests, I think here is a new one to, to push this to twenty twenty four.
Yeah, it was based on E P A, uh, standards, I think, probably.
Which don't exist, yeah.
Are being created. Okay. I don't know where they stand.
Yeah. Seven point six, review established electric vehicle charging rates. Where they're working on, okay.
Just FYI, I got a call the weekend from on a butter of Smeeta Williams. And I guess people are charging over the weekend or at night. I don't know if that's a been a long problem, but.
Yeah, it's true at all of them.
Is it? Okay. So this would.
It depends on, there are some that we put in with a grant that we are required to keep free.
Okay, oh, okay.
But there, but we're looking at, uh, other options, um, the ones that were not put in by grant and clearly there will be many more of these put in. That's the, the country's demanding it. So we really should be ahead of that.
Yeah. My view has been all along that the ones that are in public spaces are for people while they're running public errands, that it's not intended to substitute for fueling your vehicle. Right, but we do advertise them and say that we have them. And then to say, people can't use them.
Well, right, but it's only free because we haven't decided to start charging.
Right.
I mean, so it's not, you can't blame people for taking advantage of a free charger.
Well, I know, of course, no, I know. I'm not saying they should or should, but people are concerned about at night and the weekends. I guess we can charge.
It's just, it's just the cost, right? I think my observation would be if somebody can afford an electric vehicle, they can probably afford to fuel the electric vehicle where the lifetime cost of the vehicle, even if you're paying for your electricity, is lower than a gas fuel car.
Right, but the solution to this problem is for the towns to start charging. Not to criticize people for taking advantage of an amenity that we provide.
But when I asked about this originally, nobody wanted to charge, so I'm glad there's a sea change.
But we do get people complaining. We say the same.
Now, was the fee going to go in the general fund or is the idea to have that, the charge go into like a?
On the state law, we have to go to the general fund.
Okay, but we could say, okay, we made X amount off that. Maybe we should put that towards a goal, right, towards?
More chargers.
More, whatever.
Chargers or whatever it might be towards.
Not officially. Yeah, that's.
You know how much we're paying because there's separate meter.
Oh, okay, got it. So just be a watch.
Well, but that one, that one though, is not separate meter, right? It's in the ones.
Oh, yes, they are. They have their own meter. Yes, they do.
I think that's a part of their design, but. Yeah. Um, seven seven, recommend the community energy aggregation. So that we did recommend, um, it has gone to town meeting, town meeting approved kicking off the process. We have a committee that's working on it.
Yeah, we're looking to, um, issue the R P and have them back. I think it's May, we're doing it.
Yes, after town meeting.
After, yeah, it'll go out. It's being reviewed now and it'll go out and it'll be back in time for us to start with.
Seven point eight, evaluated adoption of the net zero building code. Uh, again, like the priority, we would need the code. The code is available. Code is written and it's fine.
Exposure drafts are up there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, uh, that the general view is that we want to move this to twenty twenty four. But if I may, I would just like to say that many of our neighbor towns have uh, adoption of the net zero script, uh, building code on their spring town meeting, including Wellesley, Brookline, uh, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln. There's, there's about twenty of them. So this is not a stretch. I actually have a little hand chart. We, if anyone wants to look, but for, for residential buildings under four thousand feet, there's essentially no change. I recognize that we're getting a building commissioner likely, so clearly this can't happen in us in spring, but I would like to highly recommend that we consider this for fall.
Well, we have a climate action committee that's going to write, this is part of their work too. I just want to make sure.
It is also part of their work, but it, it, um, is more than just a committee's work, in my opinion. I could say my opinion, you know, I'm doing.
All of those towns have sustainability coordinators.
Right.
Well, that would be part of this, the climate action. For it and that would be a big deal too, but, but essentially, I will just reiterate that adopting this code changes almost nothing in like ninety percent of our buildings. And it doesn't change the inspection methods either. It's just the ratings, uh, that, that builders have to maintain. And since in Mida, we're talking essentially about new construction, this does not present a high bar. And I just, I would, I would advocate for everyone to take the, the stress level down when thinking about this project, because it's actually not that big a change. So I'm just gonna, I'll leave it there because I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's my, that's my pitch.
What, but what's the, my, what's the benefit then? It's not changing. Is it just the hers ratings? I mean, the hers ratings would change.
It's, uh, so if, when we're talking about building new residences under four thousand square feet, if you're talking about making them electric or pre-wired for electric, there's not much of a change. And that would be in new construction, both the least expensive and most efficient and most likely scenario anyway.
Well, new construction is more than four. So what did you for four thousand?
No, I tell you about four thousand and under. Four thousand and over is a different category.
Okay, because that's what most new construction is in Mida.
Well, it doesn't have.
Well, I know. Okay, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Would that is, would that incent development under four thousand?
Yeah. Depends what it is.
It's the only thing.
Okay, thank you.
So Kate, I think I can understand deferring at this point.
You've already voted to defer. This is not a new.
No, yeah, but, but it does seem that if, if that, um, if that is now finally drafted, I would actually love to find a time when we could hear about it. Just, it doesn't have to happen in the next two months. All right, but, but I think getting somebody in to talk with us about it would be a bit.
Part of this meeting, this meeting was to take some things off.
Twenty twenty four.
It's gonna be twenty twenty four.
I, I do not understand the chair to say that she wanted the presentation in twenty twenty four. She said not in the next two months.
Not in the next couple of months, right? Uh, it can even be after town meeting.
Twenty twenty four? What's, what's twenty twenty four?
I don't know if this is going to help or hurt, but just so everyone's on the same page, the state changed two of the codes. So the stretch code was updated and there's a net zero code. So there are changes in need of applicable now because we had already adopted the stretch energy code. So the updates to that are happening now.
Yes.
The next step is the net zero and I hear you Heidi noted. Um, but, so I just wanted to clarify that there are two things and one thing is happening in Mida now. The other thing, twenty four.
And would it impact most of the new construction in town?
Yes.
Yes, so, so that is significant. Yeah. Good. Uh, seven point nine, begin development of sustainability guidelines, construction and renovation of existing and future municipal buildings. Um, that is part of the climate action planning committee. They will be making some recommendations about that. That will be topics of discussion in the future. And seven point ten, support and encourage improved access to equitable solar energy opportunities, including assessment, planning and funding, again, part of the C N P C review. Um, so happening as part of that planning discussion.
And what are we, so Madam Chair, what are we expecting out of that committee for I'm not sure, that's kind of easy, uh, for a town meeting, is there possible zone changes or possible? Not yet.
No, not this year.
Not this year. Okay.
The biggest thing for this year was the work on, um,
Got it.
So, and I do feel like I just want to make it clear that I have an, I, Heidi Braille, not Stephen Braille's wife, have an interest in things related to climate and that this is not a reflection of the fact that I, you know, share a home with the chair of that committee. This is that.
Oh, I know you do. Yes.
Just so that we're clear, and I'm here as myself and not as Mount East. I'm not on this committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, this is something that I am interested in, but I think everyone should be interested in. Alrighty, um.
Do you want to shorten this?
Kate, I'm, I'm going to defer anything that's after this.
Thanks.
This page intention up blank. I like it. All right.
Um, we, we, so we managed not to take too much additionally off. I think there may be one thing.
Did you add anything?
Yes, you did. You added the.
I was just kidding.
Yeah.
You did.
But you know, you added the, uh, the, what do we call it? Extra hours, office hours.
But so much has been accomplished.
Yes.
Amazing.
It is amazing, isn't it?
We are fairly goal oriented people, aren't we?
You'd be surprised to know.
G S D. There you go.
Thank you.
Get stuff done.
You can move to a chair.
So, um, I would welcome the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, is there, is there any questions in the discussion? Any opposed? We are adjourned.